Good to go, Joe.
Okay, well, we'll go around the room and introduce ourselves. This isn't a formal meeting, but it's more of a discussion with Troy Downing's contingent. So I'll start on Joe Delwold, County Commissioner.
Brian Medor, County Commissioner.
Sam Carlson, County Commissioner.
Jim Bollmer, Local Resident.
Miles Thompson, a veteran and law enforcement liaison for Congressman Downing.
Colin Corbett, I am the Regional Field Rep for Congressman Downing.
Brian, go ahead, Mel.
Helly Martinson, Shoto, Akanta.
Brian Coles, Valley County Planner.
Okay, and this is not going to be a formal meeting. It's more of just a discussion. So you can just, whatever comes up, comes up.
Yeah, good.
I guess if you guys want to know, oh, go ahead.
Did you bring us a tech? Did you get them?
Let me make it call real quick.
No, just thanks for coming. I appreciate you coming out.
Absolutely, absolutely. Glad that you guys were able to lead on such a notice. I appreciate it. I guess one of the things that had...
I don't have anything specific, really, so, yeah.
I was just gonna ask, you know, in regards to, we obviously have been in contact about appropriations, I guess, you'd sent, you printed this off for me. I guess if you wanted to just kind of go over it a little bit and, you know, give me a little bit of detail, and you guys have been in contact with Sam, so I know that, but, you know, if you guys wanted to go over it a little bit so that in case I get asked any, any questions, I can, you know, any additional questions, I can help fill Sam in with some things.
This is Paul Jack and Eddie, our clerk and recorder.
Hi.
Hey.
And you are?
I'm Colin. I'm the Regional Field Rep with Congressman Downing.
Okay.
And Miles, I'm the Veteran and Law Enforcement Liaison. So.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
So the letter was regarding the emergency services building?
Yes.
Yeah, we started in on this project a couple of years ago.
Are we on?
Yeah, we're on. And what started out as a couple million dollar project is now a four million dollar project. So we've, we've kept the same footprint of the building, but we're about two million dollars short of finishing the inside.
Okay.
So we're just, and we had one time only funds that we wanted to use, and we talked with our department heads, and they thought, go with the big building and then just try to finish it as we can in the future, because there's definitely a need for the whole building.
Right.
It's gonna have a corner and health department and EMS and search and rescue.
Okay.
That's what it's gonna be.
So then with the increase of the cost, was it just because of inflation, or was it just unexpected sort of costs that were added on later on?
Up until about a year ago, the construction company that we had contracted with thought it would be doable for about 2.4. And I guess within the last two months, they, they actually went out for bids and they changed their projections to around four million.
Okay.
So what we're currently doing is we're gonna, we bought the building, we're gonna erect the building, get the cement done, and the windows and doors all in, and then just have this empty building until we can put offices in for the other projects.
Yeah, let's lay all this out, put that there in empty until we can figure out what we're gonna do.
And when are you guys looking to start directing?
We're gonna break ground this week was the plan.
Really? Where's that, where's that?
It's right behind the chair.
Yeah, right behind you.
At least there's that sort of proximity to everything. That'll, that'll be nice. And how big is this building gonna be?
It's about 12,000 square feet.
Okay, wow. It's a big building, yeah. It's awesome. Exciting for you guys.
Right now, our health department is over at the hospital, and they're just there on a handshake agreement, which is tenuous at best.
Right. How long have they been there for? The whole time?
They've been there for 30 years.
Okay, okay.
Long handshake.
I did a story this weekend through the hospital being, you know, 10 years.
I can't believe it's been 10 years.
Yeah, I can't either.
That contract that specifically provides that benefits will provide space for the health department. That's, I mean, it's more than a handshake, right? It's, it's in that contract.
Oh, that's good.
Because I looked it up.
Well, good, yeah.
And then, under the presumption that you were able to allocate the rest of the funds, how long would it be for you to fully finish the inside?
If we had the money.
If you had the money, yeah.
I would think we could get it done within a year.
So when you spoke to Sam, what was he, what was, what was the discussion, I suppose? Just kind of, just a little bit more information about, you know, what the project is itself? Or?
I never talked to him.
I've never talked to him.
I thought you had.
Uh-uh. No, I didn't. I think Brian has been in touch with Sam.
I spoke with Sam, but it was regarding floodplains.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
So he had, he had to speak to him.
Okay. Wasn't any discussion in regards to that? I guess.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so I guess, you know, with that, and what I'll do is I'll have, if Sam hasn't reached out to you guys on this, I will have him reach out on that.
Oh, okay.
I know right now that they're, you know, in the meeting and discussion, planning for appropriations right now. So I will ping Sam after this and let him know to give you guys a call, and we can set up a meeting and discuss this a little bit further.
That would be good, thank you.
Great for you guys. I guess, you know, while I have you here, just some of the things that the congressman always kind of says when he's meeting with people is, he wants to know, what are your hopes, what are your fears? Kind of just an overview of everything that's sort of going on in the county, what are you guys looking forward to, what are you guys a little bit concerned about, something that I can relay back to him so that he has an understanding of what's going on on the ground, because, so.
Well, law enforcement, which you'll hear about from our sheriff and the city in Shoto are in conflict about their contract.
Yeah, I heard something about that. I was reading.
So that's kind of been a year still.
Okay.
So, but you'll hear more about that from the sheriff, Van Setten, I'm sure.
Yeah.
When you go over there. But that's been going on for, what, two, is it two years?
No, a year.
A year, okay, yeah.
Was they wanted, the city wanted its own?
Yeah, well, they wanted out of the contract.
Okay.
The whole deal now had a good article, good letter in the paper. The whole deal is these local governments aren't keeping up with inflation, and their ability to provide services with the levies and dollars that they have is disappearing, and it's happening to us with the road department. And that's the whole crux of the deal. The city doesn't have enough money to pay for the services that they need.
Okay.
And we don't have enough money to subsidize the city to give them the services that they need. So that's the end task.
Okay, okay.
That's impacting us across the board, the, the cost of doing business in regards to what we have for budgetary constraints is, is just, it's not adding up. We have, we have costs that have gone up two and three times in the last few years, and they just take a bigger and bigger piece out of our budget that we can't, can't adjust to.
But I think if you talk to any commissioner in the state, they would tell you the same story.
Right.
Sure, city government too. And it's just, it's just happening.
Yeah, that's one of the, that, that is very true that I have, you know, a lot of the county commissioners that I've spoken to, as well as some of the city councils as well, you know, it's one of the things that they always talk to me about is that just the cost of living with, and then inflation is really, really damaging any sort of resources that they have. It's getting really difficult to provide basic services for a lot of things, so. So with the road department, you were mentioning how that was becoming a worse issue?
Yeah, just parts and fuel, tires, the costs have gone up. And also, we've had a hard time finding qualified people to hire. That's becoming more difficult than it used to be, too.
Is it just people aren't reaching out, or is it just people just aren't qualified in general?
Well, we require a CDL, and that's become harder to get. That's one of the issues.
As it so, interesting. I suppose the other thing, the regulations that they have for CDLs now.
Yeah, we just don't have the experience base out in the work community anymore. And it'd be nice to have one answer as to why people don't work, aren't there to work, or don't, I, I don't know the answer. I think everybody would like, like one, but.
Yeah.
The, the fact of the matter is, we just aren't getting, getting people to, to come to work.
Right. I know, that's one thing. My dad always says, he's a, a truck driver for, for Semstone, a cement company back in Minnesota, and he always says, most of the guys that I work with, they're over the age of 40. You know, there's a handful of 20-year-old kids that are coming in, but they quit within six months because they're, you know, they don't want to do the work. And, you know, it is definitely an issue that is being presented.
Yeah, it's not just here.
Right, right, you know, absolutely.
Getting geared up?
The computer will not let me access, because the password we have is wrong.
Oh, really?
Unless you have another one.
Did you get it from chat?
It's the only one we've got.
That roadmap is on my, next to my desk. Can you just draw?
Well, no, it's a lot more in depth than just trying. Grab some floodplain stuff. I really wish it was that easy, because maybe the DNRC could actually give us the questions that we've asked. I think with the road department as well, being with our budget constraints, is that a operator that is trained and has been doing heavy equipment would be close to two times what we can offer.
Oh, really?
We have to back to, back to budget.
Yeah. And then, I guess. Trying to think here.
There's a question down there.
Yeah.
How secure is PILT funding for counties that has received PILT?
Great question. I will have to get an answer on that one for you.
It's a significant part of the non-discretionary funding that county receives.
That's still my annual appropriation.
How much are you receiving roughly?
I don't know, 600,000, it's something, it might be, what was the last year, 680? I think 700?
Yeah, it's about 700.
Yeah.
Yeah, I will, whoops, I will ask on that.
Yeah, if that ever disappears, we're gonna see a significantly different amount of services.
I don't know, but it's out right now. And there, to provide the services people want, the funding is not there to do it. And if we stay on that continuing trajectory, the ability to provide services is gonna be reduced.
Get you there. So with PILT, I guess, what is funded in the county through that? Is it broad strikes?
We can use it for, it's completely discretionary, which is the great thing about that. We bought road graders with it. We have maintenance funds in there. We've ran holes in money for court cases. If the county attorney gets, there's a murder case now, it's over a million bucks. Yeah, typical one. So we just, we have, mainly we use that for contingency fees, and we buy our road graders with it.
Okay.
It pays for the audit.
And the audit.
Pays for our audit.
Transfer, what, 15,000 a year directly to fire?
To fire.
Yeah, Keith gets them, too.
Yeah, Keith gets, I think, 95,000 goes to the law enforcement.
Will you ping anybody on PILT real quick?
What's that?
Do you ping somebody on PILT real quick? Sure, just kind of ask. Maybe we can get an answer before we leave that way. I guess what else is?
That's, that's the driving issue behind everything.
Okay.
Is being able to provide services in a timely fashion and an affordable fashion. And if we have a lot of services, if you take snow removal or something like that, that it's not a, not an option where you can choose to not do it. You know, there, there, there are demanded services that, that consume a huge amount of what's on the table. So, so being able to have much flexibility is very limited.
Right, no, absolutely, absolutely. And I'm gonna have Miles here ask about that really quick.
I'll reach out to Sam, I know.
Also, maybe ask him to reach out to these guys as well, too. That way, we can get that set up sooner rather than later, so that you guys can talk about it.
Yeah.
We usually get it about the middle of June, and we never know if we're getting it or not.
Okay.
Literally, I mean, we never know.
Yeah, pretty much before, but it's not a big issue.
Has there ever been a time when you haven't gotten it?
It was cut.
They cut it back for a while, but it's never ceased. But when I first got here, the commissioner that was here, they had a revenue sharing program that was basically the same in the 80s. And they shut that off with no forewarning, and it just about killed all the counties for, and then they came up with PILT to replace it. But there was about four or five years that they got nothing, and that's always in the back of their mind.
Right, right. Yeah, that'd be more special if no notice on something like that. That would be absolutely terrifying.
Well, the bad thing is that with this PILT, there's no way to, we can't infuse it with anything else, because we're, we're stuck with what we can raise our taxes by, which is a half of, well, now they've changed it. This year it changed a little bit. Because 4% is the most that we can increase our main budget with.
Right.
Um, you know, there's, there's no other services that we can go out and charge for or stuff like that. The PILT is a very integral part of.
And our only choice would be to do what they did when revenue sharing quit. They just had to cut services, lay people off, and because we're required to have a balanced budget.
Right. And that would absolutely decimate your county if that.
Joe, can I may I throw one more question at you, and then I promise I'll shut up? I know that the House is, and the Senate are looking on the federal budget now.
Yes.
And there are proposals that would reduce Medicaid funding for states. Teton County has one hospital. It's here in Shoto. It's a 25-bed critical access hospital, employs 70 people in the community. And it's got like a $128 million annual impact based on the salaries, not to mention the fact that it saves lives because it has a 24/7 emergency running.
Right.
It can't function without Medicaid and Medicaid expansion. It is a huge chunk of its revenue. And I just wondered what the congressman's position on potential Medicaid cuts might be.
And I can get a further in-depth answer, but obviously, you know, the congressman does understand the importance of Medicaid, Medicare, in rural communities.
Right. There's just so many working poor.
Yeah.
Who don't make enough to be able to buy their own insurance. And many mom and pop businesses, like the one that I run, don't have the revenue to provide insurance as a benefit. And those people fall into those, those holes where they're working, they just can't afford.
Right.
Care. And Medicaid expansion addresses that concern.
Right. And that's, that's one thing that I can get a deeper answer on. I can definitely get back to you on, on that. But like I said, that is one thing that he definitely does understand, is especially, you know, like, he'll be in town a couple of weeks from now, and I'm trying to get him a meeting set up with a clinic down in Boulder. And we're gonna go, you know, that'll probably be one of the main topics will be Medicaid. So it's not lost on him in regard to that, so.
Yeah, Sam gets back, you know, I don't, I don't know how soon that would be. But we will definitely relay the message to you guys soon, you know?
Yes, we will. I guess, yeah, is there, you know, any other?
The other elephant in the room is the floodplain, it looks like.
Yeah.
So I spoke with Sam yesterday in regards to, so I sent him over the current status where DNRC is, what letter we had sent them. Our current floodplain status is on hold until they respond. But in a conversation I had with them a few months back, was this basically just gonna find a way to tell us, well, too bad, when we already know there are specific elements that have been done, like the Highway 89 North has been improved, which changes the geographical aspect of where that water's going to break, if it will break. And then also, still not able to tell us exactly where 64,000 CFS of floodwater is coming from. There's no reason, it went from 16,000 CFS of the Teton County or Teton Pass area, now it's 64,000, just based on what mathematical calculation. And when you ask, you just really kind of get, well, it's just that way. And even speaking with one of the engineers, he got frustrated with us. We have a, the Teton County, or the Teton River Water Commissioner, who, we went through it, we went through letters, we've checked gauges, gauges being told they won't be utilized, with data that shows that there is a 38 point, some 38.7% absorption rate by the time it hits the Teton Pass area to here, which reduces our water flow to, even if the 64,000 is a realistic number, if it is real, the city would only be hit with 16,000 CFS. So the floodplain and the floodway that they're proposing is astronomical. We are adding 260, or 256 homes, no, sorry, 270 homes to the floodplain, and 87 homes into a floodway, which means now that we have a large portion of, of the, I'm gonna say it's wrong, the west side of Teton, or Shoto, and the center area, that we can't do anything with homes. Unless the home is burnt down to the ground, then we would have to rebuild based on the floodway standards. So we can't expand homes, and I know it affects realtors, it affects people trying to buy a home. It affects, you know, influx of people moving in and out. When you're told, well, you're gonna be adding 25 to $35,000 onto your mortgage over the next span of your mortgage. So average is between 800 and $1,600 a year in flood, floodplain insurance.
Yeah.
Well, if you buy a little, a nice house on the, in the floodway, well, that's it. You can never expand or grow, so now you have to move. Well, we have kind of, you know, a lack of, you know, options to buy. There's barely rentals. People rent homes and apartments here without it ever having to be posted, because there's that large of a need. So you can't, you know, I definitely know the hospitals affected by it. There's a lot of people that, you know, want to come here and work, can't even move to work because there's no homes. And with the floodplain being a larger expansion, we're, we're in a massive influx with it. So it does affect some other smaller areas, but overall, Shoto is the largest impact it hits.
Right.
So, and DNRC, you know, has been very helpful in giving this information, but when it really comes down to the essence of bolts of exactly where this CFS came from, unless you say it's a realistic number and mathematical due to whatever reason they have, still can explain why we redeveloped Highway 89 and it's built up. Some places, eight feet higher, well, the water's still gonna go the same way. There's no way possible. Also, in Jim's case, he has a piece of land at the south end of town, there's no floodplain, but then all of a sudden, there's a floodway. So you, a floodway is basically consists of anything two feet or deeper.
Right.
So, but because the center of town will only be hit with six inches or less of water, it's in the 2% floodplain, which does not require insurance. Well, the 1% all of a sudden is, what, 70, 80% of your property?
Well, it affects it, yeah.
Logistically.
I've got a very small map here that I brought up on my phone.
Yeah.
But.
And you'll see it just.
And I don't mean to butt in, and.
Oh, no, I'm in here.
But, you know, that was on the main meeting we had with FEMA and DNRC and all on the Zoom over at Dan Exville. And when it was asked, well, how do you arrive at a one and a half tons flow rate?
Yeah.
From the previous flood? Well, it's based on the Sun River, because they don't have the data for the Teton. Well, you can't just base it on the Sun River. That's what they told us there. You, you need some actual flow rates, some numbers. The, the stream gauges Brian's talking about, the commissioner has eight years of data. Well, we can't use them, because it's, we need 10 years. Eight years is quite a bit. Delay it two years, maybe use the stream data, you know?
Did they reject that, you guys put in that request to have it 10, use, delay it two years so we could get 10 years? Did they reject that request?
It's all in that letter. So right now, we're waiting for their response.
They never responded to it.
They never responded.
So that, so everything is gonna hold until they do. But one of the gauges that was on that had over 10 years of data that proves that the water, the CFS flow was, would not actually be what they're projecting, well, we can't use that gauge. Well, actually, we'll know when they get back the letter, we rephrase that. But they can't use a certain gauge for this. Well, that's not the right gauge, that we can't count that one. And then we got a course that they were going to cancel, or no longer provide service for, meaning that the gauge would just be shut off, which is the bottom gauge you're using. So what's the span? I can't remember the mileage, but the entire top part of the county, all the way to the southern part of it, or not southern, I'm sorry, southeast, southeast part, the furthest gauge, so an entire county that you can fit three Maui Islands in, those are the only two gauges you're telling us. So somehow, 64,000 CFS flow is gonna start here, and it's gonna keep flowing over 60 miles of river, which is probably, I'm off on my mileage, but I'm just giving you kind of.
Right.
But 60 miles. So no water absorption, nothing. Can't use that. You can't use, I'm gonna forget the term they use. So no water will be absorbed into the ground or spread over a large field or area. We're gonna get 64,000 here, 64,000 there.
Also, all the irrigation companies divert water in that distance from the mountains to town. So when you get an event, you can divert, like, I mean, a lot of water between the different irrigation companies, not factored in. You know, I mean, there's just a lot of issues. And, and if, if they determine, I think, that that were the proper flow, this is the map they come up with. And it's pretty small to see, but it, it basically is a triangle from where you come into town, runs along the school to the bottom of town to Seventh Street, and then it, it comes over here, and this, this part would not be in the floodplain.
That's the 2%, so less than six inches of water.
The 500 DRI is.
Yes, that, 2% is 500, yeah.
Okay.
These streets are flat streets. How does the water all of a sudden make that floodplain and this not? Just by a street?
Right.
You know, it, it doesn't quite jive. This south end of town, all of a sudden, the street makes this not floodplain and this floodplain? You know, it's, it's just a square deal primarily. There's a couple little patches out. This particular place right here, I don't know if we can, yeah, let's hope and Brian had a bigger.
It's not, I'm sorry, it does, it does not work very well.
But, but it's got so many problems. Like the hotel on the north end of town is on grade, much higher than the highway. The north third, all of a sudden, has become in floodplain, and the south two-thirds is still not in. And it's on, it's cement slab. And I asked the guy at the public hearing, well, you'll just have to get a surveyor to go in and do elevations and have, I did that already. It cost me 4,500. Now it's probably cost me 8,000 to redo it. And he says, well, you just gotta go do it. You know, that's what's gonna happen. And he says, well, you just gotta go do it, you know, that's what you're gonna have to do. That kind of stuff, you know, they don't really care. This is my property all on the south side of town. It's all of a sudden all in the floodplain, so to add another row of houses for town or something. Would you do that when all of a sudden you're in the floodplain? It makes it pretty much inefficient to do it. Um, I do have one other photo I'd probably show you here. And I could drive you around and show you some of this, it's a little easier to see.
God, love that.
Uh, if you had the time, but, uh.
So, one thing I wanted to ask, so the floodplain, what like height would that water be at at that point then?
Oh, so where he's showing you right now, the blue is basically anything from zero to two feet.
Okay.
The lines right there is five, or is two feet and deeper. So anything below two feet is a floodplain.
Okay.
Anything above that, because that, the depth is where current, uh, exists. So that's how it was explained to me. So floodplain, floodway, so floodplain you can still build and you can still add it in your home and do all this stuff. But you are limited to a certain standard.
Right.
Which again, gets a lot of, you know, additional costs, surveys, LOMAs, Colmar's, all this fun stuff. Uh, but in a floodway, nope.
So, I was just gonna add, well, you just look at that map, I mean, so I, I have property south of Jim down there. And so from my house to eighty-nine is a little over a mile straight across. And they're using their numbers, the, the, this, this, this massive amount of CFS that they're projecting. It, it's like, it's not two feet, it's like eight feet deep. Like, that is an ungodly amount of water.
Yeah. Yeah.
It, it's not, it, the big problem I'm having with all of this is. Jim, pretty much nailed it, they, they don't have data, so they're like, well, we gotta do something. So we'll use the Sun River, which is ten times the size geographically of a basin. They have more data there and they're like, oh, you know, how, how much different can it be? So they're gonna use it here, and it has this, these, like, you know, obscene behaviors. Then when you try and interpolate that onto a drainage like this, a basin. And you get weird, like unimaginable, like lakes, that's like glacial stuff.
Yeah.
How, it, it, it's not just like tweaking numbers, it's like this defies logic. On all these levels, and this is, the problem is, it's like, yeah, well, what are you gonna do? That's not acceptable.
Right, right.
It's not.
So this is a property, this is just a street shot here, but this is a property on the west side of town over here. So you can see this is not even in the floodplain, not even a hundred year.
Right.
There's just a little strip right there, and then this is all floodway. I can drive you over there, you cannot see an elevation change from that property to there. You cannot even see an elevation change, how did that go from nothing to floodway? This particular property is mine, I surveyed right there to right there, and this is nine inches higher than right there. This right here can't be a foot difference from there, I mean, it looks level, but there could be a little, you know. How does this all of a sudden become floodway when this isn't? I surveyed from right here for an elevation to the power line that goes through approximately right here. This is three feet lower than at that fence line, and yet this is floodplain and this is floodway. All I'm saying is there's so many discrepancies in their map, and they like, well, get a surveyor and fix it. It's like, they're, they're not willing to, to, to correct their problem, even if their flow rate is right. Which I don't think it is, cause they don't have the data to prove it, there, there are just so many problems. And how does all this floodway just make this perfect triangle and show them? And, and so that's some of my problems, but deeper, as Brian touched earlier, you know, I sell property in Shoto. How about these hundreds of homes that are getting affected? And it's like, oh, well, that's the way it is. And, and it's gonna change the value of their home, the, the, the cost of, uh, flood insurance. I mean, everything is huge for those people and, and, and now they own it, and yet across the street, that house isn't in a floodplain, but theirs is.
Yeah.
Or the floodway, and all of a sudden, it, it, it just needs looked at and, and they're not really willing to. Put any more effort into it, they just go like, well.
And our, my concern is that, and I'm, I'm not in the city, but my concern is, is it, we're already seeing this. We've had a, a series, a, a long series of governmental overreach, and so we're, we're seeing that. And the tail end of that is going to be things like, you know, if you're in the floodplain, well, now you gotta get all these permits. And then, and then you gotta submit that, and then somebody's gonna be like, yeah, I don't know, maybe if you do that, it's like. The, the cost, the time, the burden is asked, it's just, it just keeps going up. And, and it's like, what do, what, what problem did we solve?
Right.
That, that, see, no one asked that question, what did we solve? Well, we had, I, we tried to ask, like, what do you, what, why are we doing this? They don't have a real good answer. I don't understand, I'm dead at all.
I can see why they would wanna update data that's probably, I don't know, when's the last flood map done? I mean, it's quite a long, so you wanna update it, but use proper numbers to do it.
Yeah.
And then when you get done, don't do the ten thousand foot flyover. And there you go, maybe you gotta do a little surveying, I guess, I don't know.
Yeah.
It's not working the way it is.
The strange thing is their numbers are suspect and that, I mean.
Yeah.
Anybody can tell that, and they're just not willing to back off.
No, it's kind of like, okay, you've done our job, there you go, that's what you get.
Our initial hope was that they would really look at that and come up with a different scenario.
And then just completely so.
It's not happening so far, we haven't received.
So it's just a different program, so now that we've identified that there's gonna be an issue, now we applied for a grant program. So the DNRC will issue us a now a new engineering firm, and they're basically came in and go, okay. This engineering firm they have will give us ten scenarios of, we're gonna raise every home four feet in Shoto. Is a scenario, right? Next one is to build in a levee, uh, or redirection of the water back into the Teton River at these key locations. Um, uh, there's a couple of different scenarios, which they give. And then what you do is you go back and go, okay, well, these are the only two that you can actually apply for this grant. It's not really a grant, we don't, nobody, nobody comes to us, it's all managed by DNRC. This engineering firm comes to me, they go, okay, well, based on this, we can find you funding from FEMA for these two. So we're gonna really dive into this and DNRC pays these engineers to come in, and they figure out a new scenario. Now we've concreted the entire west side of our highway. Um, to redirect water back into the Teton River at this flow rate that they still can't define to us. So then it moves around, so now we take the multiple homes out of it, we reduce our flood, floodway. Um, so now we can fix our homes, but we're ten years away from that happening because the process in. Which we waited a year, almost a year now, for this mitigation plan, but we had to get to a certain point to be offered in, uh, mitigation engineering. It's like we're constantly pushed around to, there's, there's only one channel, there's only one process in which to do this, and again. Like we've all mentioned, the numbers just don't realistically, we live here, we see it.
Yeah.
We know where everything puddles up during the, you know, when it rains. It just doesn't add up, and then just to have our flow rate, our CFS flow during a flood, the highest was sixteen thousand four hundred. Now, because we had an event in nineteen eighty-seven, uh. Uh, forty-nine thousand, now we have sixty-four. So now this new LiDAR, and I know it's a big push from the Yellowstone floods and stuff like that, but we're now being put into a position where. And I've been told by other counties, can't fight the data, but the data makes no sense, especially when you have certain people that have. That have spent a ton of time researching it, we've got water commissioners, stuff like that, they live, breathe this stuff.
Right.
Yeah, doesn't matter. We're just gonna, they're gonna find a way to tell us, no, we're still gonna go down the mitigation, we're gonna get an engineer, we're gonna have to redesign. And go ask FEMA for these millions of dollars to make this project happen, which. It's, it, it just, it doesn't always, it, it doesn't seem to add up.
Right, yeah, I mean, just from a glossary look at it, doesn't seem to make a lot of sense to me, granted, I'm not.
I mean, I mean, you know, and, and I think he said something that I, I, I think is not. Certainly something we can count on is FEMA grants.
Right.
I'm not assume, I don't think we should assume that there's going to be a whole lot of that going forward anytime soon.
Right.
So if, if the entire, um, design is, oh, well, don't worry, yeah, the numbers, accept the numbers. But we'll help you build something better, I'm not entirely clear that that money is just gonna appear.
Right.
Based on just kind of whatever you can see. I don't think there's an appetite to dump a whole lot more grants into anything.
Yeah, and I mean, the, the last thing you wanna be stuck with is, you know, the bill on that sort of. Or, you know, it's something like that came to fruition and then you guys are left holding, holding, you know. The run to the deal on that, yeah, no, absolutely.
And, and this, this, these numbers are just, I mean, and, and when you press them. We, I've been, Jim's been in these meetings, they, they just, DNRC just can't. They got, they've got their regression formulas and that's all great, but. When you look at, they're, they're using, they're using, they have such limited data. And, and that really can, can really throw wild results in a regression model when you don't have a lot of data. And, and then you, a little bit of research I found, like we talked, we talked about the sixty-four flood, and they're like, oh, yeah, that was just, you know, this, that was a two-hundred year event or whatever. And then you go over to USGS, you look at some of their historical information, they're like, well, that's probably, you know, a, 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 an aggregation of five thousand year event. So it, it's, it's not consistent and it's, it's a whole lot of. Um, accumulation, and accumulation of, of like a bad decision, a bad decision, presumably you have really wide variances. And that's what we're seeing, some really wide variances and the impacts are very serious.
Yeah.
There's a spot right north of town. You look at the map and the floodway. And it goes like this around, the Teton River runs right through it, and it's not even in it. And it goes, no floodplain, and then it comes back out around, it's like, really? The river runs right through it and it's not even in the floodway. It, it's just that inaccurate.
Yeah.
It's just, it, there's so many problems.
It's kinda like they do.
Needs to be fixed.
It's kinda like they just.
Not just shout through.
Intern to do it.
Yeah, they had the intern to do it, they just looked at a map and threw.
Well, basically, it looks like that's what they've done. Somebody didn't do their homework.
And, and if it takes them a half years, do it right.
Right, right.
I think that's what we're talking about is, can we just collect the data then?
Instead of shoving it through, it's gonna affect guys forever.
Oh, yeah.
And a lot of people in town.
Yeah.
He said, how many hundred homes? And that's, that's a big deal to these people, I mean, someone retired and they, all of a sudden affects them like that. It just changes it, you know.
I couldn't imagine wanting to pay flood insurance and then maybe not needing it.
Well, even then, they've stuck so many hundred homes in, or was it seventy-nine you said, or in the floodway? Well, those people can't even change their home footprint. They can remodel inside, but that home is the way it is forever and, you know, it's just affects the value.
Yeah.
Plus what they wanna do with it, it just, you know, so, yeah, it, it just needs fixed.
I mean, it's, it is, um, I, I can't imagine a buyer that has choices that would. That would take a, a home in a floodway, I, I mean.
It's, it's pretty tough.
It would be tough?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean.
Why would you buy an asset that you can do nothing with, you're, you're gonna pay, you know.
Price, price only.
Price is the only reason. So that shoves it down, I mean, it's, it's a, it's a, and, and, and I just can't get past the permitting process that we're, that we're going to see. And we kind of are already starting to see in, even in the, the floodplain in terms of things that used to be. You know, blocking and tackling, and now it's just a whole new layer of bureaucracy to get things, to get anything done.
That's horrible, yeah. So I guess with some of these permitting in just regards to, I mean.
Well, so, so now, like, I mean, um, I'm in the Lions Club and we're working on. Uh, getting, uh, some shelters built for picnicking in the park. And just getting those permits agreed to are, it's just. You can't get, I mean, for stupid shelter.
Yeah.
You're just getting that approved, much less a dwelling, I can't even imagine what that would look like at this point. Um, and these are the things that, and then the, the engineering designs and, and the surveys. And it's just, it's all of that stuff, I mean, you can't get a survey for under eight thousand bucks, I don't think now, I mean.
Elevation going through.
So I mean, they can do their shelters, but it can't have more than two walls, cause then it consists as a building. Even if you designed it to where the walls were halfway up and allowed the leveled water that's projected in the twenty-twenty-seven. Firm maps that they're proposing, even if you built those walls above that, it still doesn't constitute because there's more than two walls. So you can only have two walls, so we live where it's windy, uh, it snows and it'd be nice to keep sheltered, someone closed in. Enjoy your picnic and put your tablecloths down, all that fun stuff, well, two walls consists of building. Doesn't, does not exist, but if I had a third wall, then it consists of a building. So then I can't do it in a floodway, because the floodway is going to just, it's another piece of debris that goes all the way down. But then we apply for a variance, then everybody has to come to a town hall meeting and weeks and weeks and weeks and weeks. Still can be denied.
I'm talking about a picnic shelter.
Yeah.
Not, not even remotely close to looking at and building.
But if we.
Yeah.
Build the existing small one, which we know doesn't do it. It's that kind of thing, it's just, there's no real common sense approach to all of this, it's a, you know, and. We all need engineers, they're amazing, but it is black and white and it, nope, there's no, 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 no. Which are all of our surveys and engineers have to abide by, but when you're working at the state level, they're like, no. Who says this, can't do it.
Yeah.
Fight with Molotov, it, it's very frustrating, there's no concept, well, if you lived here and worked in a park and you'd be like, well. When the flood happens, it's just gonna keep going. It's not going to hit somebody's home, it's not gonna cause more damage, it's not gonna take out, it's just gonna go into some trees.
Yeah.
Sure, okay, well, where's the risk? Where's the additional damage, yep, we lost our shelter, got it. But we built it to this floodway standard, it just, it never really just calculates out.
Yeah, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to, to me personally. Seems like if you were to abide by the regulations that they'd want, why would they have an issue with it, but, yeah. It just not make a whole lot of sense to me either.
So I have another point, and I apologize, cause now I feel like I'm on my soapbox here. Um, so I'm also the grant administrator and I have a couple of different hats and stuff like that, I'm also floodman, floodplain manager and all that, flood stuff for the county. Um, as a grant administrator, you know, we are underfunded. And it feels that way when we are stretched super thin, we're four hundred miles of gravel road that we have to maintain and. I don't know what they said, twenty million dollars to regravel all the roads and to maintain them and to get people to and from and, you know. A reasonable, um, fashion. Um, every time we have to turn around, I'm asked to go find a grant to pay for something. One is our law enforcement, um, our nine-one-one system went down, well, we had to use that out of our. Uh, a backup fund, right? Our pilot fund, so we don't get our pilt, the nine-one-one system that we were paying a company to maintain. Didn't tell us that our primary went down, then the secondary went out, and they didn't put any money or time into it. We had to scramble and come out of the pilot funds, a, over three thousand dollars to put our nine-one-one system back to operating. Which we greatly appreciate, everybody was involved in it, we were lucky to have that funding. But if we didn't have that, well, where would we go?
Right.
Hope for the, the Homeland Security Grant, which, which only fixed, luckily we had the bill funds. But we don't have enough left over to fix the next problem, which is the radio communication in a rural area. So we have to upgrade that system, which has become obsolete, which is not upgradable, or we have to completely wipe it and upgrade. We can't maintain it, it goes down, we're on our secondary and then we're now pulling from additional funding. And departments to make it work, well, we apply for a grant, we hope that we get it. It's half a million dollars to fix a radio system, which is a standard emergency thing that we need in the county. We have what, we're two billion dollars in our emergency fund in the state, why are we not able to tap into state resources? Why do I feel like, I, you know, I'm constantly at the table going, can I please have some more?
Right.
When I constantly have to go find these grants and then, because this county is. Little bit more funded than this one, we don't qualify for ninety percent of the grants. So we're constantly begging for money, I have until October before they even start reviewing it, and we get an answer at the end of the year. So we have an entire year that we are playing the roulette.
Right.
With our radio system. We, we need it, but that's our only funding source that is large enough for us to get. Um, but no other resources. Um, but no other resources. So if it goes down, primary then secondary, we're gonna have to figure out how to find half a million dollars. When we are already one point some million dollars behind in a building.
Right.
So. Having additional resources and the state being a good resource to go to when there is law enforcement, emergency services and stuff like that. And not felt that we have to go start asking for Homeland Security Grants or whatever grants are out there. Ballistic vest, there's a grant, uh. Can't remember the name, but he passed away, so they built this grant and it's built on the fact that basically they cover a large portion of ballistic vests. For our officers. But we only get so much, which is greatly appreciated.
Right.
But why would we need such a grant? Why do we need so many grants? And again, like I said, a lot of us don't qualify for them. And I've talked to other counties as well, in the same position, like, yep, couldn't apply for that one, couldn't apply for this one. And then when you talk about the multiple departments, Homeland Security offers, you know, emergency services and stuff like that. Well, I gotta go talk to DS and AMS for the county and say, okay, which one of them saved the money first?
For the uh, the law enforcement stuff, the ballistic vests, were you guys able to get ballistic vests for your?
Yeah, yeah, we're good. So the grant does help us. I mean, we still have to come out of our funding for a portion of it.
Okay.
Um, but let's, since we're talking law enforcement, let's talk about the fact that we have to, um, I'm gonna say it wrong. Pay for services for our jails, because we don't have the money to build our own jail.
Yeah.
So now we're giving away more of our funding to, I mean, Keith, Keith can go to, the sheriff can definitely go to more like where they're sitting, but.
Yeah.
We have to go to the next county and use their services.
Yeah.
Which, great.
Sucks, yeah.
But at the cost of what we're being charged.
Yeah.
It really hurts.
Yeah.
And then those costs are always diving back over to the the towns and the cities that we contract with.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's it's unfortunate uh for appropriations and stuff. Their law enforcement funding, they can, you can. They can pay for uh basically designing the building, but they can't pay for building the building with with our appropriations, which is kind of a pain in the ass. But uh, there there definitely could be other grants that would be available. I can, I can look into it for you.
Yeah.
But it's the law enforcement stuff.
Right, right, but but again, we now have to compete with every other city, town, county, state for that funding. And I know we're the lowest that's on the poll. Uh, switch back to flood real quick. Flood insurance. So once we get all this all going and I register and get us this flood rating. Then we can get a discounted rate because we put in all these mitigation plans. But the effort to get that done, so that we get a little ten or fifteen percent for the county discount, again, is all based on. Uh, you know, these lengthy processes and then you find out, well, you don't qualify. So same thing for grants or for like flood, like, you don't qualify for a lot of stuff. And things sort of become super frustrating, like, the county's, you know, struggling and we're not the only county doing it, struggling trying to get things. To run at a safe and normal level and we're always struggling to make that happen. And. I know the commissioners have, you know, in multiple meetings have said they are not gonna go and ask for levies and more money and keep asking. The citizens of the county to pay taxes and more taxes. When do we gotta pay for flood insurance? So.
Yeah.
So there's gotta be some kind of state resource that, you know, is there, they, and then uh, after we spend the five hundred thousand dollars. We have to pay the service fee to opt, to pay for Motorola to um, keep that service on. You know, connectivity, you know, their um service contract and all that. We have to pay that every year. So not only do we have to try to ask for free money for half a million dollars. We now gotta figure out in our budget how to come up with new money to pay for this new upgraded amazing equipment.
Yeah.
Makes our lives better, but we're not getting, we're not getting any more money.
Right.
So what do you, gentlemen, view your, going back to the flood stuff, the floodwater stuff? What what do you view being that you're? That Congressman Downing is at the, you know, at the federal level and a lot, a lot of this is the state stuff. And how do you, what kind of, what do you think could be done or what you, how do you? I just don't know how that, how that could work or what what you have seen, experienced in terms of your discussions with state. Is that? Uh, I'm just curious, like, how can you help us with that?
So I'm, you know, obviously with a lot of state issue stuff, we can't typically get involved in. Um, a lot of the times what we can do is we can be vocally supportive of things within within areas. Um, you know, obviously we can't use our federally designated. Um, power to come down on a state like that. State has its own autonomy in that, in that regard. Um, but, you know, just in the sort of sense being supportive and then also communicating with these departments as well. To try and fix the issue and sort of come to a conclusion. Uh, we are limited through ethics and what we can and can't can't do. So, um, you know, it's one of the things that we have to. Have to look, look for to make sure that we're not breaking anything, um, because we obviously don't want to overstep our bounds. In regards to that and be superseding uh the state, but, yeah, hopefully that. I don't know. So Sam got back to us. He said he's in a meeting with the congressman right now. Um, I can write. Well, unless you do it on one of your cards, here's his contact information. I'm gonna write that down.
I have his contact information.
Oh, yeah, you do. That's right.
Yeah. I got it.
Never mind that. Yeah, uh, just reach out to Sam and ask about that. I I asked him about it. He knows that you're inquiring, um, so.
Yeah, he has a full email, kind of where we're at currently with where DNRC status is, their full link, what their projection is. Um, it doesn't list that we're currently on hold. I also sent him the the letter that we had sent to them. Um, asking them to clarify all of these gauge datas, uh. Do an additional LiDAR over Highway eighty nine north. Um, and provide us some more input on exactly why they're not calculating for absorption rate and.
Right.
All, so he has, he has all that as a, as a G S J, so. Um, yeah, on the floodplain stuff, he definitely knows where we're at and then he knows to reach out to me. And he spoke to Jimmy before, so definitely, you know, he's got questions.
Yeah, the pilot grant though, did you discuss that with him already or?
No, uh, the floodplain is the only thing I spoke with Sam so far.
I would, I would just maybe mention that in the email to him so that he definitely gets back to you in a timely manner, because he has a lot of stuff that he deals with, so.
Yeah, um, I can pass his contact over to the commissioners and.
Okay, that's a great idea.
You guys wanna write to him? Melli, would you like his contacts as well?
Sure.
Okay.
Any other subjects we wanna cover today? Okay, I think we're good then. Sure appreciate guys coming out.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate your guys.
Thanks for coming on, yeah, nice to meet you.
That's all we can say. We don't have to work.